He's catching on, all right.
Yeah.
Where is he?
He's moving up.
All right, just call me in order. Please, Brian. For our indication today, we've got Paul Brown, Rock House Liberty Church, going to do our indications. Appreciate your company.
Thank you. Our kind gracious heavenly Father, we come to you, Father, in the name of your son, Jesus. Father, we thank you, Lord, for this opportunity. We thank you, Father, for this day that you have given us. Father, we know that you rule all nations. Father, we know in your hand is fire and strength. And, Father, it lies in your hand to make prayer and to strengthen all. Father, we just pray, Lord, that you just lead and guide and direct every leader, every person, man or woman here today, Father. And God, that you will guide every thought and every idea, every decision that is made here today, Father. For we seek wisdom from above us, and, Father, it comes from you. And, God, we just ask you, Lord, to just continue as there are laws at your side, Father. That you will just continue to lead and guide this fiscal court meeting here in Magoffin County, Father. And, God, we thank you, Lord, and we thank you so much, Father. We just ask you to just continue to watch over them and keep them safe. And we ask this, Father, in Jesus' precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Our holy allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation undergone invisible with liberty and justice for all.
First caller, roll.
Here.
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 All right, is there anyone else that has signed in and would like to speak this evening? All right. Need a motion to consider approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Yeah, I'm up for motion.
You have a motion, we have a second.
I say.
Motion made a second, any further discussion on minutes? Hear none, all in favor, six five, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
No, motion carries. All right, is there any reason we shouldn't pay the bill? And something you may have seen this time, we've got the previous, the bills that went in on the standing order, that way y'all see all the checks that's written every month. Before, the only thing that was on there was those bills that were brought here to be approved. So we incorporate those into the minutes. All right, here ain't no objections to the bill to be paid. All right, fund transfers, credit and insurance fund transfers.
We need to transfer a hundred and five thousand from the road phone to the general phone, and then from the general phone forty thousand to the jail phone, for a total of a hundred and forty-five thousand.
We have a motion on the fund transfer.
I'm up for motion.
Motion made a second.
I'll say.
Motion made a second, any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, six five, say aye. Aye. No, motion carries. All right, next item we have is to consider first reading of budget amendments. And on a pass, we typically done this once a year. It's good practice to go through whenever there's receipts that come in and beginning balance of transfers that we didn't have in our initial budget. And we just go ahead and we try to do this quarterly where we'll make those adjustments as need be throughout the year. So I entertain a motion to approve the first reading of the budget amendments.
I'll take the motion.
If you might, we have a second.
I say.
Motion made a second, any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, six five, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
No, motion carries. All right, now the reports, treasures report. Now, you all got those on email yesterday. Do you have any questions or concerns or anything on the treasures report? All right, hear none, we'll move on to departmental reports. Keeman had a prior engagement couldn't make it, so he's left me, or listed the things that he wanted to report on from the deputy judge's corner. The community center, we've got the walls and the ceiling painted and drop tiles in and pretty well got everything. Community center looking really good. It's, it's looking as good as it ever has in the past certain years. We're still working on getting some bills and quotes in and paint with Jim Ford. Our intention is to make it look like it did when it was, when it was first built as far as the layout, the paint schemes and all that stuff. Being that rubberized floor, it takes a special paint, a special kind of guy to paint. So we've, we've talked with folks, I think, a little that do this kind of stuff, and hopefully we'll have some information on that to take. Next item, I don't think that four, right?
A big split.
Yeah, and they, they, that, the folks we're talking to will be able to repair that.
Yeah, that's what has to be repaired.
Yeah, that's where expansion going was in that concrete floor.
Oh, yeah.
They were dropping the steel part. The justice center, in the front of it, you know, they have the, we had a guy painted it the other day. He put primer on, people kind of freaked out a little bit because of his license. But they got a paint color that matches the tan paint in the back. The calcium, whatever it was, it kept running out of that brick because we're driving the upper wall and it's tanning no more. It even couldn't, it just looked dirty. Now, if you drive by, it was stained and it looked like it should. There just wasn't anything to clean that with. They tried acid, they tried everything, and the brick face, they said I put too much of a certain kind of acid on the brick to break the face off, so we just painted it. And I think, I think it looked pretty good. As far as 911, we're moving it over here to the justice center. We've, we're in the bidding process with CAD, and then we'll be getting radios and doing those things. We hope that before March, that 911 is fully functional in this building. Our goal is to do it a whole lot sooner with this bidding process and the generator. We're still waiting on FEMA to approve the generator based on the grant that we got. But we can afford a generator with power, power of this entire building rather than just 911. And we got the money in there to do that. It makes more sense to have this as the command center should have another tragedy happened like back in 2012. So, once we get all that in place, this will, and we've got it, I think, in our 911 plan, emergency plan, that this is the command center now that used to be the health department. So we'll be able to, because I have everything from right here. Up at Hattie Mountain at the Battlefield Park, we had some folks back early in the year after a little bit of power up there so they could plug in and have their foot outs and all that kind of thing then. And while we're ready, we went in and put the lights up. So we've got LED lights, if you've seen on Facebook, you can see that it's lit up really good. They're inexpensive lights as far as energy consumption, and they put out a whole lot of light. And they're outdoor lights, and hopefully they'll be there for a long time. As far as the restaurant facility up there, we're still waiting on the plan approval from the state. You know, we've had those bids before on the old, and they kind of way outside of what our grant could afford. And we've got a new design, and as soon as that gets approved, we'll be putting that out to bid. The Lumina Master Bridge has been completed, and the old Camp Prairie Bridge has been removed. And those folks now have got a bridge that will take a heck of a flood to get rid of. It's, it's solid, and I think that they got, they know what better bridge to go to. As far as the other bridges, we've got eight that have to be replaced with FEMA, I believe it's eight. We got approval on the box cupboards for Law Branch and for Wado. Those will be in toward the end of the month, and as soon as they come in, we're going to start installing. So we'll have those that way. I know they've been along, waiting a long time to get those in. Just a couple of other things, as far as committees go, the veterans committee that, as you all know, we've done the resolutions, has, is going to be arming the Whip Brothers Sand Bottom. We're doing that this Saturday, October the 19th, at three o'clock. We'll be on the bridge at the Sand Bottom for the unveiling and the ceremony. DAB will be there doing the twenty-one dance salute taps and all those things. And just be aware of that if you're in the area. But everyone is welcome to be in. I think it's, it's some long past due when we've got a void enrollment that's still on the Arizona. It should have been, it should have been a long, long time ago, years. The other thing, I think you may have seen, the city's got, got some state prisons done work. They're working between the city, the mayor and I, who are working with the interagency agreement. They're working two or three days here in the city and two or three days out in the county. Once they get most of the stuff done here in the city that they can do, that the prisoners are going to be done, we'll be pushing them out more and more, doing work on the county road. And right now, we're focusing on getting the brush and all those things off the sides of the roads that we're not getting to with tractors, especially with the guard rail. You just can't, you just can't cut that, that takes manpower to do that. And we cleaned up around that Sand Bottom Bridge with, for this ceremony. I think the state guy's done that at the prison, so we appreciate that. And hopefully we get a lot of things done a lot quicker. We only got five, eight guys working every day, that'd get a lot of. And let's see. I think that covers everything, I'll get to the judges section on the communication. Ashley, you have anything?
Yeah, I just have an announcement regarding the schedule at the recycling center. Due to decreased manpower, we're going to just have the recycling center open until noon, Monday through Friday, for drop offs. If anyone has any drop offs outside that time frame, there's a trailer just at the side of the gate over there. They can put their stuff in it. And we're just going to be picking up in town two days a week. Recycling is selling for a lot less than it used to. Typically, you used to get about $2,000 for a trailer, and in June, we got like $200 for a whole trailer load of recycling. And that's a tractor trailer load, almost 40,000 pounds. So we're just having to cut back a little bit due to financial reasons.
Yeah, and we've been looking just for a few months. If you go back to 2016, we were getting anywhere from 1,800 to $3,000 for recycling. And as I look at our receipts this year, we're getting 189, 372. I mean, just financially, it's not a, it's just not, it's not something that we can run full time and have a lot of staff out there. We've also got some issues with our recyclable boxes out in the county at the fire parks. A lot of times, we're having to go and pick those up and take them straight to a rescue to the dumpster. There would be some recyclable items in, but a lot of it is garbage. And those are not garbage dumpsters. We asked everybody out there to kind of keep an eye on those dumpsters. It ain't all of them, they're not dumpsters, they're recyclable boxes. And make sure that you, if people throw garbage in, you see them, let us know because that's not what they're there for. You know, we're bidding out garbage collection services right now. We got a company that does that, we're trying to help with the recycling. And hopefully we'll be able to keep it. I've been in discussions with county judges all over Eastern Kentucky and Central Kentucky, and a lot of them are getting out of the recycle business. But we're going to hang on to it as long as we can. You have anything else?
No.
All right. The only other thing I think I meant to bring up was our code patching. Well, that's still ongoing, and we've got 76 roads completed now, where we've got most of the holes taken care of in the rust spots. We've seen all these advertisements, or not advertisements, but news reports about money coming out for patching and for blacktopping across Eastern Kentucky. I throw the hat in the ring too, we'll see if we get anything. I asked for about $350,000, let's see. That seemed to be what the going rate was, caddies was getting, so we've had the contractor in, give us some quotes and those things on several of our worst roads, and we're trying to see if we can get some of that. All right, let's see. All right. No other committee reports, so section four is new business, consider approved except insurance tax settlement. I think last time we just had real personal property, and this time we got gas and oil.
We got gas and oil together. The guys know we're together. I'll start with those, I'll do the cover. This starts on page two. Page two concerns what we paid for the county. We took in $37,000, $36.18. I dispersed for the county $37,000, $38.10 for an overage of $1.92. Next page is what? Is for the special levies. Special levies are a lot of the other districts other than the school. So I took in $29,001.49. I dispersed $29,003.54 for an overage of $2.05. The school, it's the next page, we took in $46,428.35. I dispersed $46,430.96 for an overage of $2.61. The next page is more or less just a summary of everything that got taken in and dispersed. And on the last page, it says that I had a total collected of $63,917.40. I should have had $65,645.48, puts our collection rate at 97.37%. Are there any questions about that? Any questions?
Yeah. We're prepared to give it once we're done.
Okay. I'm on my call. For the county, we brought in $41,443.85. I dispersed $41,443.85 for a difference of zero. For the special levies, collected $32,462.55. Dispersed $32,462.55 for a difference of zero. For the school, collected $51,955.48. Dispersed $51,955.48 for a difference of zero. And on the summary, I just add there, it balances at zero as well. Now, what we brought in was $39,932.74. The amount to be collected, $72,858.72. This collection rate is just 54.81%. I attribute some of that to unmined coal not coming out for April, so.
You think the out of state guy too, is?
Huh?
You think the governor of West Virginia too?
Well, it might be. I don't think coal's doing a whole lot of anything out of the state, so I'm not really surprised by that. I wish it was more, but I'm not surprised.
They devalue it, it's not even worth tax.
Right. Any questions?
I'll have to make.
All right.
Questions, there entertain a motion to approve the gas and oil and unmined coal tax settlement from the sheriff of 2018. Motion made a second.
Second.
Motion made a second, any discussion? All those in favor, six five, say aye. Aye. No, motion carries. Thank you. Next item is 4B, is to consider approved naming county road 1772 from Nunno to Basil Warnerman Road. This is the little connector road crossing the Sand Bottom that goes up to Merle Tobbie Road. Just one little house there, and they were descendants of Basil Warnerman, and they asked if this happened. It don't have a name. That's good enough to make.
Nobody objects to having a name.
Well, there's only one of them, and it'd be, be sorry.
Okay.
The other one, it goes to Merle Tobbie, it'll go to them. There may be another, I don't think, I think it's around a lot of people in there. I entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'm up for motion.
Motion been made, there's a second.
Good second.
Motion made a second, any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, six five, say aye. Aye. No, motion carries. All right, I went ahead and kind of announced this, but I would y'all go ahead and approve it too, but trick or treating. That'd be October the 31st, which is a Thursday, the 6th, that's when the city's doing it. So we may as well pause it. I entertain a motion to approve trick or treating in Magoffin County on October 31st, around 6:00.
I'll make a motion.
Motion been made, there's a second. I'll see, motion made a second, any discussion? All those in favor, six five, say aye. Aye. No, motion carries. Any other business to bring up? Hear none?
What about the bridge, Chief Sematary, is there anything, I thought it's supposed to crowd up?
That's, that's on the bridge income hut, and it's set on a scale. And from what they tell me, if we start getting, and I start trying to move it or do whatever, then it would end up dropping off the list. Well, I don't want to mess with that. That's what they tell me now. Who knows, this time next year they may bump it up, I don't know for right now, that's, that's what they tell.
How about the white lakes?
The white lakes, folks already been done, I don't know what to do with that. They said they will be here by the first October to do that accelerated bridge construction. Remember, we talked about that before, and I haven't, I don't know.
Might need to contact them.
Yeah, and that's another one, and that may be just accelerated bridge construction over and over.
Yeah.
They supposed to come in nine o'clock tonight and be done by six in the morning, that's good. Don't know, if they're going to mess around, it'd be too late, too cold. Anything else I will then? All right, communications. We already talked about recycle. Well, we've got some concerns with our ambulance service. I know that there've been some new reports on it, but I've also, I've been getting call lines. We got lengthy response times, and I know that this was a problem in Floyd County. And I talked to the Floyd County judge, and they brought it up at one of their fiscal court meetings. I've tried to make contact with them, with some of their representatives, but I've not gotten any response back yet. Hopefully they'll call me tomorrow. But it's, it's totally unacceptable. And you start going through all the calls, and you start looking at all the ambulances that's come from Floyd and Pike and wherever, the service in Magoffin County. And we deserve service just like everybody else. We shouldn't have to wait on the ambulance to come to the title. We shouldn't have to wait on that to come to Brextonburg. We should have one here.
That's right.
If you by my assessment too, they, they, at the nursing home residents that have to be transferred ambulance, they are canceling their appointments themselves and not taking the patients from their nursing homes.
So we're not getting service at the work return. And the thing, I, my understanding is it's stacked, but that's not our problem. That's others that they're going to have to, they're going to have to step up. And we're going to make sure of that. Let's see, we talked about that, talked about the repayments.
I'd like to encourage the fire departments, local fire departments to, to look to see what they can do there.
And that's one of the things that we're trying, the 911 right now is supposed to be talking out, rescue squad and the local fire departments in whatever area a call comes in, we're having to wait. Whenever they, there's supposed to be no time 911 when, when they don't have a truck, anything, in, in town. And when that happens, they, they're talking out the squad or the, whenever a call comes in, that fire department, to go out and at least be there pending that, so that's what we're doing right now. But like I said, I know in Floyd County too, there was a, a group got a, was supposed to be doing another statement in Eaton. So maybe, maybe that's something that's happening there. I don't know, but we'll find out.
The fire department has that sort of potential in Eaton. They're not going to be a thinking.
I, I don't know that.
Yeah, you go have one, fire department does. They've got a great job.
That's how you need to get.
We just lost here.
That's all I got. We start with life, I'm going, we start with business, you go first.
We touched everything that I, that I was going to bring in, the bridge and fire department.
Roads.
We're working on them all.
We got a lot of that, we got a lot of it.
Comments note that something is.
There's a lot of effort.
We were supposed to try to buy more roads and caddying, and we haven't done that. What's going to deal with that now?
Uh, kind of, yeah. There's only so many of us, we got 900 roads, we got not a lot of that. And that's something that I've been working on with the big Sandy ad. And as we get more free, more free time to dedicate to this, we will. We're still working on a lot of FEMA projects, actually, what, three days a week for the past two months, with FEMA on outlook and at 240 sites. Once we get all of that nailed down, then we'll start working on this list that the ad gave me, and start making the distances. We've got three DMI digital measurements, and we'll be able to get the roads down, I think, these things, what, six feet? Backwards within six feet?
Six inches within a mile.
Six inches?
Yeah, six inches.
We're very close now. We will have nailed down what they should be.
I'd like to thank you, Mr. Putt, the course here, the boss, and telling everybody, the boys that worked, been getting a lot of work done. We keep saying we're coming, a lot of the people we've worked can come until we've got it. We ain't got to you, we'll get to you, you know. These boys are going to get out and just, you know, work and see what they do, appreciate the work they do, and they do a real good job. And I'd like to bring y'all to them. They're all time to work. So, you know, the more they do, the better, they make us work, so I appreciate them boys, that you know, we're one of them, you know. A good bunch of bold and good workers. The boss is out there, they do a good job and everything, so I appreciate all of them too, you know.
Inspector Lance of the city too, because they, they've been, not even to, even in the county.
Yeah, we, we've got a lot of good, a lot of young ones. You have anything else?
Appreciate the great work you've done, you've got a great job. We've got people waiting, just give us time to get there.
All right, I think public comment, we did on the floor, we got Brian Slosser wanting to speak to.
Everybody, I'm Brian Slosser, I'm a mill route instructor with Indiana, the Ohio Regional Council of Carpenters. We recently opened up a new training center in Grayson, Kentucky, it's right on Boyd and Carter County line. It's a huge milestone for East Kentucky, just in Magoffin County alone. Mill route wise, we have 231 mill routes in this council. Seventy-five of them being apprentices in our program. I apologize, I didn't get an exact count on the carpenters side of it from Magoffin County, but I'm going to estimate 200, give or take. So I came to you guys tonight and invited everybody in the county, fiscal court, if you can, I put it on your calendar. I've got a lot to do over the week, so this Thursday, from May the 2nd, we're going to have open house. If anybody's thinking about a career change, if you have a teenage son or daughter, we encourage you to come down. We'll have business agents on hand, instructors, directors of education, coordinators, to answer any question you have. You can also apply at the training center that day as well. Right now, we have, as of yesterday, we had just over 1,300 people, RSDP. We've invited representatives, I think John Blank said he's going to be there. We've invited governors, several different candidates for the public office. We have a lot of people there. Most importantly, our program, just we'll run down on it, it's a four-year apprenticeship program like most. We offer a tuition-free college degree. So when you graduate our apprenticeship, you have no debt on your head, so. Like I said, I'm, I'm the mill route instructor, I'm the mill route side, and I invite everybody. Like Magoffin County High School reserved 50 someish students, they're going to be bringing that day as well, so. Anybody that have anything to do, we'd like to see everybody out. There'll be plenty food. I'll leave these flyers with you guys. Appreciate you coming.
Appreciate you stopping by. We got a lot of union mill route carpenters, electricians, pipe fitters, that's what we do here.
We have a lot of union trades in this county. You know, Magoffin County is about like every other county that we have members in. So I'm a member of 1076, and we, you take Carter County, Boyd County, southern part of Ohio, West Virginia, you know, they're all like us, it's all, you know, we don't have big industries up here. We have all kinds of women getting into trades now. For example, I have a guy that was a pharmacist, and he quit them when he was doing the mill route apprenticeship. We bought him the stuff. You see all kinds of people, you never know, I mean, it's never too. uh, lobotomist, uh, you see all kinds of people, you, you never know, I mean, uh, it's never too late. I saw apprentices anywhere from, uh, eighteen years old, fresh out of high school, all the way to forty years old, getting into the apprenticeship. So it, it's never too late. Uh, and it, it's, it's hard to find good employment now with, uh, with good benefits, retirement, healthcare, uh, and we, and we offer it all. So, uh, we, we actually, we, we have a state law articulation agreement in the state of Kentucky, so any of our, uh, we've been in talks with Vince Minx up at the high school, so any of the students that take welding or carpentry at Magoffin County High School or any other school in Kentucky, um, if they take that class, they run a letter recommendation, soon as they graduate, they come to our program. So it's amazing opportunity for the young people in Eastern Kentucky. Uh, thank you for your time.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, Brian.
All right, anybody else wants to speak? Hear none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Motion to adjourn, need to say, or good night, second, need to start, all the favor six five say aye? Aye, I mean, you're adjourned. Thank you all, so.